My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can you see how this meeting goes with the chair that's not quite right? First thing on our agenda is to approve the agenda of this meeting of the October 30th, 2025, of the Henry County Board of Supervisors.
Make a motion to approve the agenda?
Is there a second?
Yes, sir.
Any discussion?
No.
Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none. Minutes of October 23rd, DeForest, there was a correction or just an alteration, max wage?
Mm-hmm.
And it was made?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. With that alteration, and that's what it was, just switching two words around.
Mm-hmm.
Motion to approve it?
Yes, sir.
We have a motion to approve, second?
A second.
Any discussion?
Well, then I think what we've already talked about now.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none. Jake, you're up, please.
Okay, so the first time I got here is to read the resolution. It's gonna be Resolution 31-2025-20. Whereas a bid was received by Henry County Board of Supervisors on October 23rd, 2025, for Project LBC 172554-73-44 Fremont Avenue RCB Coal Replacement. Whereas a falling bid was received and read, Iowa Bridge and Colbert L.C., $168,946. Now therefore being resolved by the Henry County Board of Supervisors in accession this 30th day of October 2025, that a contract be awarded to Iowa Bridge and Colbert L.C. from Washington, Iowa, in the amount of $168,946. Being further resolved that the Chairman of the Henry County Board of Supervisors be hereby authorized to execute a contract and contract response on behalf of Henry County.
This is short?
Motion to approve Resolution 30-2025?
Make a motion to approve the resolution?
Second?
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion?
Do we have a timeframe yet on when it is gonna be?
I can't talk to them until we get the contract signed, so no. Okay, this is one of those projects that we did say that could be a winner project if they wanted to. Otherwise, it would have a late start of next spring.
You'd finish it, you'd put the finishing touches on it.
Yep, so all they're, all we're hiring them to do is to build a box over, tear out the old bridge, and then they'll backfill to the top of box, so we use a greater amount of material around that area, so, yep.
Sounds good.
Another discussion, roll call, please.
Etrick?
Yes.
Lindy?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Please roll through.
Yeah, laser jays aside, pass it over.
Uh, next up would be a motion. I'd like to, hope to have an, somebody would entertain a motion for October 30th, 2025, 32-2025-20. That an Iowa DOT Federal Aid Agreement for County Highway Bridge Program Project Agreement Number 5-25-HBP-S-031 for Bridge Replacement FHWA, Structure Number 180991 on 200th Street over Lynn Creek is hereby approved. It is further moved that the Chairman of Henry County Board of Supervisors hereby authorized to execute the agreement. Is this the one we're talking about there?
Yes, correct.
We have a motion? We have a motion, your second?
My second.
Second. Discussion. Uh, you have to say, I can tell you about it, what it is.
I was gonna say, if I was in more detail.
Yeah, so on our map over there, uh, right, it's easy for me to point to it. Kelly, I don't need to do. Uh, this bridge right here is the one that we're getting a federal aid agreement for. So we're in the process of doing preliminary plans, and in part of that process, we have to get a federal aid agreement, so it's on 200th Street and Hickory. They kind of, we call it 200th Street, but Hickory goes north. It's a small bridge, uh, it's a wood plank bridge. We're gonna be replacing that with a slab bridge. Uh, be very similar to what we did on Nebraska Avenue, um, lengthwise, it's definitely shorter. Uh, again, just to fit in the, it's kind of a tight area, so. The consultant's working on that, because it's one of those areas that's kind of a vulnerable area, and we won't necessarily get rid of that, um, but the bridge will, would be a legal bridge right now. It's a coastal bridge.
Okay, so will that side rails on 22 or?
Yeah, it'll be a bridge, so it will be a 30-foot wide bridge. So our standard that we've been typically using under our roads and paved roads for most parts is a 30-foot wide.
Is that a 20-ton or 25-ton?
I think it's 20-ton right now.
I know, green carts and green.
It's limited on what it can load.
It's limited on that, so.
Green carts should not be going loaded on any bridge, but, um, yes, so, yeah.
No, carts, right.
Wagons are different, we say carts with a single axle. Supposed to be, I think overall, not too bad, but yes, that's something that the axle weight's a lot different.
Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none.
So this is the motion you signed, and then bring you the mark. Just give you this page there, tabbed out for you. Those are my extras.
When would the work be, if you said?
Uh, this one is scheduled as far as, it's Feb., uh, 27th, I think it's yellow, yeah. So again, we're probably looking at a letting next fall, um, if anyone goes through. And this would be let at the same time, uh, actually, it won't be let at the same time. The Iowa Avenue one, because that's gonna be looking at a grant, the one north of town here, that would be one year after, but, um, this one, we're gonna try to stick with that February, or next fall.
Fall of 26.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, next up, I have several permits here. Um, we have an underground here with a utility for service to a home, uh, and then we also have another underground to another service on Franklin Avenue. We have some right-of-way work that's gonna be done, uh, on 170th Street, and then there's some underground work on Oak Mill's Road, again, and then we have a sanitary sewer outlet, so, uh, several of these here for you. So this is the one with Mount Pleasant Utilities, that's a water one, and then, this is another one here with Mount Pleasant Utilities, so that's their service. This is a working right-of-way on 170th. And this is ministry and service to homes. And then our outlet for sanitary.
So this one's doing, he's doing himself first.
That's the working right-of-way one, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Zach, you can come in and sit down if you'd like.
I'll wait.
Okay. When does dump into the ditch like that, do we have any concerns about water cooling or weeds and all that stuff?
Ideally, we would prefer them not to be in, but, um, most of the places that people have, that's the best logical place. We always stay on the sanitary sewer outlets that we are not responsible to make sure that, usually wherever those end up at, that's where you deal with sediment and different stuff growing on vegetation, and it's their responsibility to keep that clean and drainage, so we don't go around and ditch for sanitary sewer outlets.
So do we work with environmental health on that?
Yep, we have to get a letter before we will sign off, like, um, from Ross. We'll get a letter from Ross saying that this meets the conditions that they have, yep. Okay, so nevermind. You got all of them then?
Hi, welcome.
Okay. So maintenance update, uh, operators, we were doing a little bit of minor blading again. Um, we've been focusing on hauling rock. Uh, we were able to, some of the moisture yesterday, a few of the guys were out blading as we were working on some other roads to get done rocking. Um, repairing ditches and riprap, uh, we, um, we're kind of wrapping up our work on Franklin Avenue. If you've been out there, we removed some more trees, uh, just north of the bridge, and opened that up, and then we were able to remove some of the old bedrock that was in the, in the right-of-way on the other side and use it as riprap on the west side. So we were doing some restoration of the ditch there, working with the landowner. Uh, I think that worked out really well. I had told you we were gonna move north, the guys had some things on Oak Mill's Road, so they went down and they have been working on Oak Mill's Road, and we're gonna extend our time with that brush cutter, so we still wanna go north on Franklin Avenue, um, as we haven't been there yet. But that has been doing a nice job cleaning up and getting in some areas that are harder for us to get into, so I think it's worked out really well so far.
So you're going north of the bridge right there, that's where you're headed next?
No, we've been north of the bridge.
Okay, so everything's out.
We're actually trying to get north of, uh, 34. I'd like to get up on the S-curves up there and get some of that stuff pushed back as well.
Okay.
Um, seeding various locations, the hydroseeder, you know, obviously, right now, we're putting some out there, and a lot of it just depends on weather. At this point, a lot of that will probably lay dormant at this point, but if we get it out there, then it's sitting there ready to go for next spring, uh, but that is starting to slow down. Talked about the ski loader again, we've been working there. Traffic control, we got the speed limit signs installed south of New London on Quincy Avenue. I brought that to you guys a couple weeks ago, so we're definitely got the one calls in, and we got some time to put the signs up, they are installed now. Uh, we are slowly wrapping up our yearly assessments, I have a few more to finish up, and then we will, uh, work on generating a report that I will send to Paul, I guess, at some point, of our reviews and what that look like.
Okay.
And then, I did put on here again, I have not heard anything from Iowa Bridge about the bridge on 235th Street, so at this point, we're still at least two weeks out before anything's gonna happen on that, so. That's pretty much it, unless you guys have questions on the tour?
On that bridge out west, so did they take care of that fiber optic situation already?
Yep, everything's, all utilities have been relocated.
Okay, that's what I thought you said earlier, just wanna go and check that.
Yep, good, all right, thank you guys. Good work, dude.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda, Roger, you're up, please.
Actually, Steph is gonna go ahead and start by doing the presentation.
So first, we're gonna do just a quick update of what we've been doing over the last year, and since review for next year, and then of course, the renewal. I'm gonna talk about your on-demand training, your audit and management program, your attestation materials, and then the renewal. For training, um, when we get into that, first, this first slide is a slide from our new training report that was just launched September 2nd, and was, um, sent out. Uh, each department can have that link, uh, any that has a link can have access to the report. So this is just the summary report, there's actually five different reports within the reporting, uh, agent tool. Um, this information is as of the 27th, that's when I compiled it all. It shows here on the summary report that we have 269 courses that have not been started, wait, no, sorry, that are completed, 211 courses that have not been started and for the during progress. We have a total of 121 total users, uh, those are active users, and then the completion rate is at 43.6%. Uh, we like to see that at 80%, so we need to work on, on getting that percentage up. The bottom right corner of this screen, you can see a breakdown of each course, uh, and the completion of each course. The privacy rule course is not going to be available after tomorrow, so that course will be sunset, because we'll be launching another course, so we try to keep four active at a time. And then just as a heads up, the security rule will not be available after December 30th, that one will sunset.
There's one right now, right? That is?
It's due to?
Today.
It's the 30th, yes, today, yep, due today. So the next course will then be released next week. The next slide, we see the completion rates by department, again, this is as of the 27th. Uh, as you can see, we only have two departments that are over the 80%, which is where we like to see them at. And like I mentioned, um, we wanna see that overall completion rate at 80% or above. That's all I have on training, unless you guys have any questions. Then we'll look at the audit, so we do the audit every year, um, we break it into different sections, so we're continuously doing different areas during, throughout the year, throughout the different quarters, the four quarters. Um, as you can see, the process, the audit process is broken into three sections. First, we'll talk about security, then we have privacy, and then we have breach. Within each of the sections, we have the residual risk, um, the audit protocol, which is either complete or incomplete, the overall risk score, which is low if it's a completed item, and medium or moderate if it's a incomplete item. And then we have the date for review, which is the target date, target quarter for us auditing that protocol again through the next cycle. Um, while we'll do it, while, while we're doing the audit, we're also updating your security risk assessment or privacy risk assessment, which is a requirement of the regulations. And then if we see any, um, adjustments that need to be made, your policies we would be at that time as well. So under the security section, we have completed all of the protocols. Um, we do have two items that we would do this quarter. That's your technical safeguards and high-tech specifications, so that has to do with seeing different system logs, um, making sure that ports are locked down, different, it's all IT type of things that would be up for this quarter. Um, when we get to the privacy?
Excuse me, I have a question for you. So Kevin, did you hear what she just said?
No.
Oh, something about security and IT privacy specifications, do you guys coordinate that then with the IT departments? So we're aware of what's going on?
We get a letter, we've gotten a letter before, and that's what would need to be updated now, saying that they have all the logs in place.
Although technically, we should actually be seeing all that information, but we're not getting that kind of cooperation, which is, we'll talk about that after Steph is done with her presentation.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
So with privacy, we've conducted all of the, the audit for all the protocols and rescheduled those for the next cycle. And then under the breach protocols, we've again completed all those except for training, and the reason training is it's because it's below that 80%, so we want to see that, get above 80%. Um, then we have your attestation materials that are delivered. Um, there's copies of each of these at the back of your packets. There's the certificate of attestation, which is just like it sounds, it gives a sense that we're testing, that you are compliant with the regulations. Uh, then we have the website seal, which can be put on your website to show that, that you are, um, compliant. We have the medallion, which, website seal and medallion are pretty much the same, but they just have a little look, different look to them. Um, the medallion, we recommend putting on any brochures, so if like Public Health has brochures, things like that. Um, the letter of compliance to HIPAA regulations is included in there, and in that, we are, again, attesting that you are compliant. It goes into a little more detail about which regulations we're testing to.
So, maybe you can help me, I don't know if I totally understand all of that, so. Does this come back to the county, is the county being certified, or is it the individual, or both?
The county, the covered entity.
Okay, so we're only 80?
So we're testing that the county is compliant.
Okay, but if we're only 80% compliant with an 80% completion, is there a, a target for that? Should it be at 80, should it be at 95, should it be 100?
80 is where we think that we can successfully defend you if a breach occurs.
Okay.
Um, of course, higher is always better.
Sure.
I mean, in a perfect world, we'd get 100%, but, you know, our goal is to be able to, um, defend you when you have a breach, and we have successfully done that at the 80% level, because we, all live in the real world, we know we're not gonna get 100%. We wanna get as close to that as possible.
Obviously, right, yeah, okay.
Yeah, we have 797, and some of it has to do with employees coming in and leaving, you know, you have some fluctuation in there, and the new employees have 30 days to complete things like that, so there is some, some lag in there.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, then we have, um, the full audit report, so that shows the three sections that I just went over, and then at the bottom, it does have a little discussion, and we do mention the training being under the 80% in that audit report, and that we need to, you know, work on that. For your renewal, your renewal date was actually October 5th. Your current service level is our HIPAA Select package, and the cost for this year would be $10,986. And then as a reminder, we do still have the indemnification program in place, where we're indemnifying you for the first $100,000 in federal fines and penalties for reaching there. Under your current, there is a compliance checklist of things that have to be completed for that indemnification to stay active, um, but under HIPAA Select, there's only two things that would be ID bias, because we handle everything else, and that is to get your completion rate above the 80% for your training, and then if there's any security incidents or breaches, bringing those to us, to make sure that those are properly investigated and remediated and things like that. Like I said, the rest of the items on the compliance checklist are, are things that we already cover under that package.
So have we had any breaches or incidents in the last three years?
Um, none that have been reported.
Okay.
To us.
The problem, I, that, that's a difficult number to answer, because it's based on your reporting incidents to us, and we're not getting incidents reported. And that gets down to the whole issue of, of the program, you know. For better or worse, I would classify Henry County as being our problem child. We have the, you have the lowest training score, and we're getting the least cooperation. And to move forward with the program, you really need to get someone in the county who's gonna be responsible, you know, drive this thing forward, there's only so much we can do. Otherwise, basically, you're wasting your money, because given these numbers, we wouldn't indemnify you, because you're not at the 80%, and we're not getting the IT information we need. And so, you know, moving forward, we would request, if you wanna move forward, that we have someone inside the county that is going to be the driving force. Our most successful counties, we have, one of the supervisors becomes that person, you know, because they can talk to all the department heads and make sure they're complying, get the training done, and all those kinds of things, and we just don't have that here.
I guess, now, Dobby's question is, we're paying $10,985 for salt up here, right?
Well, you're paying, I mean, think of it, you know, sort of like OSHA, right? You have all, all, so you're the things that you do around OSHA. In the event that you have an accident, you know, it minimizes, you know, what your fines are gonna be. So we're basically an insurance policy, but we require, we need to have certain things accomplished to keep that, keep that in place.
How do you identify us if you're not giving the information you need?
I mean, there are other options, for example, you know, you, you have us on here, you know, for training, you know, just getting training won't help, uh, the situation, so if you're gonna pay someone for training, that's gonna be wasted money.
Yeah.
Um, one of the options people will look at is ISAC has a program. Uh, my personal opinion of that, and I can go through why with you, is that that's not gonna get you compliant, and so that would be wasted money. Um, you have a good foundation here for the things we've done over the years, but it's really at a point where you need to make a commitment to, um, get it in place. And what I'd like to point out is, you know, when you have a breach, and they're gonna happen, uh, and they'll happen one of three ways, either you'll self-report it, um, someone will file a complaint, and we've had that happen with the counties, or someone that you work with who is a, uh, called a business associate, because they're working with your, you know, information, will file a complaint. And when you have that, that incident, it arises to the level of a breach, and right now, the median fine and penalty is $50,000, actually, $60,000 just went up, but that's only the fines and penalties, the actual cost of a breach to you in terms of, you know, legal fees and having to address it, and, you know, having to put additional program in place, you're looking at about $300,000 per breach. So these things get expensive pretty quickly, and that's the reason to have the program in place. I've been doing this 15 years, um, probably had three dozen breaches, had to report. We've never had, uh, any of our clients pay a fine or penalty, because you can go to them and say, here's all the things we're doing, regulatory agencies are looking for what they call best effort. So you can't keep breaches from occurring completely, but you can, you know, have a best effort to keep them from occurring, and then you walk away without any fines, penalties, and the other ancillary costs that rise up to that $300,000 level.
We need to get our engagement level up in order to be?
We really need to have someone at the board level, supervised level, who is, we can work with to make sure that the department heads are doing what they need to do.
Okay, all right, that helps understand that a little bit better, thank you.
That's all I had.
Oh, all right.
Sorry.
Anything more from you guys, though?
No, we're good.
What you're new to this, is anything you have thought of?
Um, just what I asked the questions on generally here, you have $10,986, and then we know we're not very compliant, so we ought to do one of two things here. We ought to increase our engagement and make that happen, or we need to agree about the, the dollars that we're spending as a group here. Uh, but I saw Katie look at that a little, little, uh, with a high eye there, uh, about the compliance thing on HIPAA. Were you not familiar with that?
No, I'm familiar with that.
Okay, all right.
I'm, I'm not sure what our group is, but I can assume that we're one that's over 80%.
But do we use that HIPAA word on our publications that say?
No.
Compatible or anything like that?
You probably hope.
Yes.
Yeah, you're almost at 89%.
As we should be, right? Good, good stuff, lead by example, but again, I was really more concerned about, or curious whether or not you're using the little emblem.
No, that was news to me, so.
That's why.
I actually would like their contact information, so I can talk to them a little bit more about that.
Okay, yeah, we might as well utilize, we should utilize every opportunity that we get to promote those types of things.
And it's good for a year, so the attestation is good from October 5th, '25 to October 5th, '26, so it lasts a year after.
Okay.
So the only, last thing I'd wanna say is, you've been a long-term client of ours, we appreciate that, we've enjoyed the extent we've been able to work with you, and obviously, we, we would look forward to continuing, you know, under the parameters that I sort of laid out.
Great, thank you. How about you guys?
I'm under the, uh, thought, we probably should go ahead and sign up for it during the year with the evaluation a year from now, if we have the ID, IT department overseeing this and making sure that we're doing what we're needing to be doing. Otherwise, as you said, Steve, we're basically throwing our money away.
Are you talking specifically with breaches and cyber security and those type of things?
And I'll turn, give it.
Yeah, I'm having difficulty hearing, I'm sorry.
Are you familiar with this type of program anyway?
I only heard part of the presentation.
You mean, as far as breach, security breaches and things like that, having a security type?
Yes.
Policy?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm familiar with that, so what's the question?
Basically, um, is there validity in it? We subscribe to a similar program, yeah.
So anybody that might not know, Kevin Harder is from Lee County, and he's been a tremendous resource for us in our, our gap time here, and with the ITech team, ITC, IC team that's here today helping do our audit and our evaluation, so. He's been a great resource, thanks, Kevin.
ISIC, I think, ISIC.
ITIC, yeah.
So the other thing that I would ask is that someone kind of take the lead, so we can get the training numbers up, because that's the first thing, when you have a breach, they're gonna look at.
Right. I understand that.
Yep.
Would agree, totally, somehow we need to work on that and get those numbers improved significantly.
Any thoughts, moves you to, about renewal?
Well, Chad's reviewing it there, I was gonna give him a minute to digest it all.
It is kind of sad to see someone, you know.
It is kinda sad to see someone, you know, half-half Public Health, getting up there, that's good, and the treasurer's office, that's off, treasurer's office, they're there, so, I'd like to see some of those other numbers higher, obviously.
So just, if I can just interject, I'm sorry, is, one of the things that our, some of our counties have started doing, because secondary roads is always an issue in terms of getting the training done, is they do a group, you know, you have in-service days where people come in, and so basically, you put it up on the screen for everybody, everybody goes through it at the same time, takes less than, takes seven minutes for secondary roads, approximately, and so it gets done, and then you report it to us, and that gets them up to where they need to be, so they don't have to get to a computer and do the training, all happens at one time when you have a, an in-service day occur.
So, I, we, we haven't, I, as far as I know, we are up to date, I, I would assume we're close to a hundred percent. We have, they come in, like you just said, they come in once a year, somebody from the auditors office comes in and does the presentation, so I assume we are up to date right now.
Well, then we're not, we're not getting the number...
Maybe something happened. If it's only doing it once a year, then there's three other courses published since then, so we're only at thirty-two percent right now.
I mean, you could do it once a year, but you have to do all four at the same time.
I guess from my perspective, we've been doing what we were instructed to do, so I didn't, I did not know anything different.
That's the only way I figured that, that's how we get it, and so, but we have some...
So we're welcome to do, we have quarterly meetings, it's not an issue.
Same, we have some that, if they, when they have safety meetings or things like that, that on a quarterly basis, we just know that...
I, I think it's interesting, I, I would assume that was one of the other two, so that's good, you treasurer, but we thought we were compliant, so...
But it is good news, I think you're a thirty-two percent out of three, so you're a third, you, you probably did really well on the one you did.
Yeah, well, we have a sign-in sheet, and I think that's one thing I was gonna recommend is that our, most of our guys, the way I understand it, is just more notification about stuff, it's, they don't have as many details as like Public Health would have, so it shouldn't be hard for us to be compliant if we know what we're supposed to be doing.
My thoughts on this is, if we would read, describe, subscribe to this, that we need you, as garage, to come in and talk to all our department heads at a meeting, because to me, it's just gone by the wayside, not, I, I, I'm not understanding anything anymore, because I was in here from ground up, and to me, it's just sort of like you vanished to me, what I'm looking at.
When Sarah was our project manager with us, Sarah Burnt, it was more active, and since things have changed, which many things always change, it's just kinda gone down, but I can definitely do that, I just did that at Washington County last week, brought everybody back in and just reminded them, you know, I went through each department, whatever department we'd look for on a regular basis, and even down to GIS, which you don't think has anything, so, yeah, I'm happy to do that, anytime.
I would support that as well, yeah, and I think as we get a new IT person on board, we need to have you folks work very closely with this new person, so they understand exactly what the expectation is, because I think there's a gap there, obviously.
Right.
We'll do anything we can to help you guys be successful, that's what we do.
That helps, okay.
You know, I, I don't wanna speak out of place or anything, but you get on the computer, you do this, and some of these training sessions seem, I, I'm gonna say goofy, because they're, they seem like they're set up for a fourth grader, you know, there's, I'm just saying they're goofy. I try to get them done, you get notifications, I've tried to get in before, and, you know, it seems like you can't get in sometimes.
I've had that issue.
I've had to reset my password every time.
You know, and, and everybody's busy, I mean, if you set time to do this, and then can't get in, that, that's frustrating, so, you know, there's other things going on that gotta be done, so...
Which we did change our training system three years ago, I think, three years ago, so, I mean, if you have problems with the new training system, then you just need to let me know, and I can help walk through it.
And part of what we do, y'all, our, our, we take pride in, in how we can support our clients, so if you can't get in, it's literally a text message, an email, a phone call, and someone will pick up the phone, and we'll resolve the problem right then and there.
And that's worked for me, obviously, but again, every time I try to log in, I have to reset, that's why, but there's always been somebody within about two hours, it gets back to me, but to Chad's point, it's frustrating.
Yeah, yeah, we don't want the frustration at all, so if we can do anything to, to help with that, we just need to know that there's an issue, and see how we can help fix that.
So, with that, I'll entertain a motion, whether we continue or not.
And that's our fee for the coming year's ten thousand nine hundred and eighty-six dollars, is that correct?
Does this include coming down and, and mass, mass blessing everybody on the training?
There are no additional charges. The only additional charge is if you have a breach, and Officer Civil Rights brings someone on site, which we've never had happen, so we don't charge, put that on the front end, but anything else, coming down as many times as you need, helping with the training, talking to people, there's no additional charge for that.
Where are you guys located?
I'm actually in Wallo, Wausau County, so I'm a little bit further away.
You said coming down, so that's why I was curious.
He's...
I'm in Indiana, and Dan is over in Washington County, Washington.
Okay. So, with all of the conversation we've had, I, I'd make a motion that we can renew for the coming year, to reevaluate at the end of that, see where we're at, but also, I, we can have some discussion if you want.
I will second it for discussion purposes.
Okay. So again, I think if, if we do renew this, the expectation is gonna be, obviously, that you folks provide some more hands-on training for the department heads, so that everybody understands and knows what the expectation is, as well as getting on board with the new IT person, so we know exactly what that person's responsibility should be, and again, that person will be responsible, the board of supervisors, and we'll follow up with that if you're not giving the information, and you need to make sure that we are hands-on and providing you the data that you need, but I think on the other side of that from you, we need the feedback to say, hey, you're only at eighty percent, and we need to improve that, and we need some recommendations from you to make that happen.
With some of our clients, county clients, we do a quarterly review with them, so if you'd like to put that into the schedule, we can certainly do that.
Especially if we're doing these every quarter, we need to know where we're at.
That's a very good, excuse me, that's a very good thing, because like I said, I just, Dan Wood, which is my name, retired Washington County auditor, and we did that on a, on a quarterly basis, and it proved very valuable, for no other reason, just to keep it in front of, in front of people's minds, that, oh, don't, don't forget about it, and just kinda, just a gentle notch.
So are, are, do you work now with garage or anything like that?
Yes, yes, I do, yes.
And I think to Chad's point, on the other side of that, from our discussion here, some of those classes seem a little, I don't know what the best word for those are, but if you're spending the time and answering four or five questions, it seems a little short, maybe, maybe there's, we need to make them concise and to the point, but they need to be worthwhile.
Well, our challenge is, we have to sort of build them to the lowest common denominator, and, you know, we have such a problem with getting people to do the courses anyways, you know...
Isn't that problematic, going lower than everybody's standards to a, a low common denominator, I, wouldn't you want to set a, a standard up, make everybody rise up to that versus lower down to it?
If we get people to rise up to it, yeah, but...
Yeah, I mean...
I mean, our goal, again, our goal is to make sure that when you have a breach, we can defend you so you have no, you know, you have no fines or penalties or the other costs, so, yes, in a different environment, like when we work with, you know, hospitals, they get a different level of training, because they're more engaged with it. I mean, if you wanted us to, to make them more, you know, at a higher grade level, so to speak, we can certainly do that.
You know, let me ask you this, Art, would a road grader operator be helped of the same training requirements as a public health nurse?
No, we break the training up in two different groups.
So it, so the training that they would get would be applicable to their exposures and their, their need for that.
For us, it's mostly just notification, like this is something to be concerned about, education on what their responsibility, or what they, what they can expect from management, I guess is what I would say, so I mean, I, I think it's, I mean, I get that they're not fun, but once a quarter, you get an email, you do the, the video, and there, I just, I think from our perspective, we thought our guys were already compliant with our training we did annually, we just kinda worked with offices there on that, so if we need to do more, that's not an issue, I think that would...
How many counties do you deal with now?
Sorry?
Sixteen, sixteen counties now?
Sixteen.
Sixteen.
Out of ninety-nine.
Most of them are southeast. We have a few stragglers up north and stuff.
I mean, if you'd like a list of our county clients, we can certainly send that to you.
Yeah. I know that's, is something I wanna see, but let Chad take a look, you know, Mark, sixteen of ninety-nine, so that kinda gives us an idea. And we're at the bottom of the totem pole there, from compliance, right?
Unfortunately, yeah.
Okay, we've had a discussion?
We have.
And you have a motion? All those in paper say aye? Aye? opposed? You're one opposition. We will get this signed and get to you, there, you have the...
I have the governor here.
Premier experiences with other counties? What's a good prod to get everybody to do it?
The most successful counties we have is if one of the supervisors takes it under their wing to make sure that all the department heads are getting the trainings, and, you know, you get the training report every month, you can see who is, who isn't, and so if a supervisor will work with the department heads that need to rise up, that's what we find most successful.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.